We will call this work session to order. It's Tuesday, May 22, and it's 1:30 PM. That's the time that was noticed and posted for this work session. We're in the executive conference room in Melody Lane, and in the Adams office agenda is open for discussion. I will begin with the roll call. District one?
I'm speaking.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Jessica Campbell.
Thank you. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling 602-609-7513 or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 7275326. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-9200 for direction. And for your information, work sessions are a time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the board supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. Introductions. As you know, I read what was noticed and posted for the public so that it's part of our record. And introductions for the record. If you are asked to speak or you're going to speak, you need to give us your name and your title so that the record is complete as to who made the statement. So Judge Dickerson is the man of the hour and the one to whom most of you address your budget items. And of course, this is a budget work session. But we're here mainly to listen to Judge Dickerson, and it will be up to you to point out if other people are going to speak on behalf of whatever the courts are looking for. So the budget work session is the budget of Court Administration, J.T., Superior Court, adult probation, juvenile detention, and the clerk of the Superior Court's office. So I'll turn it over to you, Judge Dickerson.
Thank you very much. I'm the presiding judge of Cochise County. We are here to request a salary budget increase to pay our employees at the market value of the services they provide to the citizens of our county. The services we provide are mandated either by the Constitution or by statute. Judicial branch is an integral part of the law enforcement process. Increases in illegal border activity and other crimes impact the judicial branch just as much as it does law enforcement agencies. We also provide a way for our community to resolve legal disputes involving family law, protective orders, and civil matters. We need skilled and experienced employees to help them carry out our legal duties, and our citizens deserve nothing less. Our first request is for the board to recognize the Mojave salary survey. We have to establish a market before we can talk. This survey was prepared at the request of Mojave County at their expense by the National Center for State Courts. Whenever I go to a meeting in Phoenix, the National Center for State Courts is held up as the gold standard or as business practices for courts and things such as that. We obtained the study at no cost to us. It shows salaries for different court positions in several counties and city courts. It provides an apple-to-apple comparison of our positions. Our budget request based on that study is as follows. Employees below market level receive a pay increase to the bottom level of market pay for their position. Employees who have been in a current position for seven years or more receive an increase to the midpoint of their salary range. All employees would receive at least a 5% increase. Besides the Mojave study, we also submitted documentation showing that our judicial staff, their salaries, has fallen behind that of other county positions. And this was in the packet. The judicial positions are highlighted in yellow. And this focuses on the lower-paid position. On page one, we have court assistants. Court assistant is the lowest-paid position in the court system, and it is primarily a position in the Justice Court. So these are Justice Court court assistants. Their pay is slightly more than solid waste worker and a little less than a secretary III and a sergeant V. Are they clear? We're not saying any high in this list don't pay, all right? We'll assume that nobody in the county is home. I think it's important to look where do our positions fall compared to others. Another interesting point of comparison, which Mr. Scow will talk about more, is probation officer compared to deputy sheriff. Our analysis of this is that our people have fallen behind. And that's one reason we're losing employees from the court system to go to work for other areas of the county. And I'll go back to the court assistant. I'm very familiar with the Justice Court court assistant responsibilities. Judge Ward may elaborate on that. You're talking about somebody who has to balance a cash drawer, receive payments, follow mandatory accounting standards, be familiar with criminal law, civil law, garnishments, protective orders. Deal with the public. So I'd ask you to compare those job responsibilities to the other county positions that are just below them and just above them. Yet, we're not trying to talk anybody else down. We're just trying to bring attention to where our people fall. I realize the board cannot control macroeconomic, all right? But I think it is certainly fair to consider the position of our employees. The national inflation rate is 7.9%. D-Mix is 10.9. I couldn't find any local numbers. I don't think we're at 10. I don't think we're a whole lot less than 7.29. That's just my observations going out and buying things. But inflation is high. Unemployment in Arizona is 2.8%. Cochise County is 3%. Experienced, skilled employees are in demand. Past salary budget increases have been small. These are all fiscal years. 2020, 3.73%. 2021, 0%. This currently ran 3.42%. Our request, if fully funded, would be a 10.27% increase. Other counties are providing wage increases. And these are all things that have already happened. We're not looking at future. And one thing I'm, maybe I could ask either Tracy or Tretz. Y'all remember when the Mojave study was put out?
It was last year.
Okay, it was last year. Those are like this-year numbers where people are getting big raises. That's what they were getting paid, all right? What we're getting paid. But Pocanino, 3% in August 2021. Pima, 5% January 2022. Hela, 3.7% August 2021. Santa Cruz, 3% January 2022. And those were all across-the-board increases. Our total request is $972,628. That includes EREs. That would not be an annual increase to our budget because some probation positions are funded in part by the state. And John will elaborate on that. So it's unfortunate that the state lags in. So whatever you pay, you pay our probation officers, a percent of that comes back the following year. But that's money that will come in for use for some purpose, and it would decrease that $972,000 going forward. Judicial branch has always cooperated with the board. I think this is like year 20 for me attending budget meetings. And when personnel tests were required, I think that's maybe '08 or '09, we did our part. We have combined positions in the probation department for salary savings, and John can also talk about that. And the judicial side suggested the closing of juvenile detention center, which has saved the county money. And John will elaborate on that also, facts and figures. Without a significant salary increase, our concern will continue to lose employees, both to other county departments and to other employers. And they'll be unable to attract qualified people to fill vacancies. Amy Hundley and Judge Ward will discuss that further. They're more closer to the hiring process than I am. We realize this request is significant. We believe this justifies and that it is our people's turn for a significant pay increase. John's going to talk next. John Scow, then Amy Hundley, and then Judge Ward. If any point, of course, that a member of the board has any questions, interrupt, wait to the end, however you want to handle it. But I wouldn't miss John.
Thank you. Deputy chairman, chair, and vice chair, supervisor. I'm John Scow, Corps Administrator, and the chief probation officer and director of criminal court services for the great county of Cochise. Here as a Superior Court in Cochise County has been very fiscally conservative in the past, and we're good stewards of the county's money. We ask for what we believe we need this year. As in most years, we need to concentrate on our employees, even more so this year for a few reasons. One, we're losing high-performing, performing, experienced court staff and probation officers to jobs that pay more. We're falling further and further behind Cochise County employees in similar positions and markets. We cannot recruit quality candidates for most positions due to pay, and we're losing employees to other county departments for more money. 50% of the county's 60 lowest-paid employees are court assistants working for the court clerk's office, the justice courts, and probation department. These are dedicated employees who are the face of the department when clients come in. They're the first person that people see. Last year, we did our best with the money that we were given to bring our lowest-paid employees up to a decent wage. We increased their salaries $1,700 each plus 1% and they were brought up to a whopping $14.33 an hour. The rest of the court employees last year received a 1% increase. Cochise County Superior Court and limited jurisdiction court employees, including the court of the court and our probation staff, are falling farther behind their counterparts, not just in comparative counties but in comparative departments for similar positions. Last year, the Sheriff's Department employee received a significant increase in salary. And for those who did not receive a large increase, a very respectable increase of 4% was given to every remaining employee. Our probation officers, supervisors, and deputy chiefs continue to fall further behind in pay compared to their equivalents at the Cochise County Sheriff's Department. This is not in any way to say that our loyal and professional deputies are overpaid or not. Our court security officers, our probation officers and probation staff are for the most part underpaid, falling further behind. The 20 lowest probation officers in Cochise County are paid an average of $6,081 less than 20 lowest-paid deputy sheriffs. As they progress through their careers, they fall further behind. The six highest-paid deputies earn $12,000 more than the six highest-paid probation officers. Deputies, court security officers, and probation officers attend certification academies, which teaches the basic skills of doing your jobs to include understanding the law, working with penalty-challenged individuals, writing reports, defending themselves, using their tools such as handcuffs, O.C. spray, sometimes taser, firearms. Deputy sheriffs are required to have a GDD or a high school diploma. Probation officers at a minimum are required to have a bachelor's degree, preferably in behavioral science, and one year of relative related experience. While deputies are called to respond to an incident likely to result in arrest, they arrive usually in clearly marked vehicles, lights, and are outfitted with identifiable vests, are armed with tools to do their jobs. If they contact with a person, and if an arrest is made, they transport them to the jail in line of duty. Probation officers visit residences that convicted felonies on their caseload many times at night in every corner of the county, sometimes with a partner, but often alone. It's important for them to build rapport with their clients, and it is also important for them to be vigilant and make split-second decisions based on their observations and their training. Typical standard field officer has an average of 65 clients, each of whom they found guilty of felony and receives suspended sentence rather than a prison sentence. Probation officers see each client at least once a month and often more depending on the risk level. Probation uses evidence-based practices that say we should be supervising our high-risk persons. And we've shifted our focus on behavior change to behavior change and also hold these higher-risk clients accountable. Probation officers must make home visits on their clients as well as office visits. Our IPS are intensive probation supervision officers working with a team of one PO and one surveillance officer with 25 high-risk clients. These clients are seen four times a week, home, in our office, at their jobs, and at treatment. Juvenile probation or juvenile-intensive probation officers have the same caseload ratio as standard officers supervise up to 35 kids on their caseload. Juvenile officers also must make home contacts in the same neighborhoods and sometimes even the same houses the adult officers live in. Last year during COVID, our adult probation officers made 25,796 contacts on 724 standard probation officers and 70 intensive supervision probationers. While IPS serve high-risk clients, our standard officers also have an average of 31% of their caseload that's higher risk. In the course of their duties, our officers just sometimes have a reason to conduct a search. Recently, a search was conducted on a sex offender. I walked into the office and saw that the table almost the size was full of Mac laptops, cell phones, various types, other sexually explicit material, including videos. Another sex offender during the search was found to have videos of young children in his home in various levels of dress. Another one included confiscation of methamphetamine. And another, our officers discovered basically a small arsenal of firearms in a prohibited possession home. These all led to arrests and removal of the perpetrators from the community. Our officers affect positive behavior change as well, but they hold their clients accountable to conditions of probation using graduated sanctions and deferred incarceration. We do our job of holding clients accountable on the probation side using graduated sanctions. Last year, our petition is to revoke decreased from 324 to 288. So less persons because of the sanctions that our officers are doing, less persons are being, and their probation being revoked. We also had a 34%, I'm sorry. We also had an increase of successful completions from 247 to 271 with an average risk of decrease of 34%. What that means is that we're not only keeping the community safe while they're on probation, but while they finish probation successfully, we are also taught them skills to remain crime-free. And if they are arrested, it's likely to be for a lesser offense. Our officers wear the same, almost the same type of equipment as deputies do, carry the same equipment. Their firearms qualified, defensive tactics qualified. Our probation and surveillance officers, our peace officers, they have the authority to detain and to arrest persons on probation, and they also transport probation violators to the jail for booking. In addition to our line officers, our five supervisors are behind their five sergeant equivalents in the Sheriff's Department by an average of $16,000 a year. A sergeant must have a GDD or a high school diploma and three years of experience. Small probation supervisors might have a bachelor's degree and five years of experience. My two deputy chiefs are $12,104 behind their four sheriff lieutenants who make $99,425 a year. Lieutenants are required to have five years' experience, one year as a sergeant, and then a high school diploma or a GDD. And chief deputy probation officers are required to have a bachelor's degree, also five years' experience, and two years of progressively responsive managerial experience. CCSO and Superior Court have almost exactly the same amount of FTE positions, just a few different. Yet, nine CCSO employees make $99,000 per year, while only one court employee, non-judicial court employee, makes over $99,000. Although our probation staff are behind the Sheriff's Department, salaries, the previous year, our officers were being further behind after the huge raises that were given to CCSO last year. When our detention center closed, we were given permission to retain 10 detention officers, seven for our detention screening and transport team, and three for pre-trial services. Pre-trial services is a non-funded mandate. We appreciate the ability to keep up with employees, and it's a very productive and successful and cheap way of keeping a defendant out of jail in order to remain employed and support their families through a school and/or attend treatment. We currently have 30 individuals on pre-trial services and in the capacity for several more. Pre-trial positively saves the jail, possibly saves the jail and county money by reducing the jail population by the number of clients that are on pre-trial suspension. The detention screening and transport team is a 24/7 functioning that screens youth for detainment based on the information provided over the phone by law enforcement officers on the scene. And if the assessment recommends detainment, law enforcement will deliver them to the detention center where our officers will do the intake and transport them to the Pinellas County Detention Center in Florence. Lastly, I want to go back to my statement on the court being good stewards. We are effective and efficient, which is reflected by our ability to safely and successfully conduct jury selection, including grand juries, cold trials, throughout the pandemic, while many courts did not. As a result, our backlog is minimal, and justice remains relatively swift and fair. Most of us work in older buildings which are patched up, yet they serve a purpose. It's the people that make the difference, and we have top-notch professionals who genuinely care about their jobs. We care about retaining our experienced and talented and certified employees. Our HR director, our associate court administrator, our deputy chiefs, our security chief, and finance director are all here about the people's love for their jobs and the need to support their families and not work a second job when they tell us to move on. It costs a lot to train a new CSO, court security officer, and probation officer, surveillance officers. We need to retain our people. When the county and court administration made a decision to close the detention center, we did so with the knowledge that we would save the county a lot of money. $1 million was not a dream, but actually a realistic number. Our detention budget at the time was nearing $1.8 million, and everybody knows that was going up every year. Although we were given a generous amount in our detention line since then, it was $1.448 million this year. We're conservatively projecting a surplus of $600,000. Just a few years ago, Cochise County paid the salary of a court administrator, a chief probation officer, and the director of juvenile court services. For the past two years, I have served in all three of these positions. With that structure and the salaries that were paid to the incumbents at the time in 2019, less my salary is an additional savings of $182,000 a year. When a county runs a detention center, they're responsible for 100% of the cost. The detention savings is an annual savings that would be realized every year. Just the amount alone, which is already figured into the annual spending limits based on county population and the amount saved by combining the positions, will cover, actually will fund our salary increase request due only to cover ERE. I would ask the board to consider the professionalism, the importance, the experience, the effectiveness, the efficiency, and the loyalty of the women and men employed within our county judicial system and do what you did with the Sheriff's Department last year in Graduary. Thank you. That was very informative.
My name is Amy Hundley and I'm the clerk of the Superior Court. I wanted to touch on the difficulties we've had in the clerk's office, selling positions and retaining employees. We've had a finance manager position that's been vacant for over a year. We haven't received any applications that meet the minimum qualifications for that position. The annual salary for the position is $53.7. That's compared to the county grants financial analyst that's $54, just over $54, and the recently advertised county deputy finance director that's over $80,000. So I think salary is the reason that we haven't had any applicants for that position. We also have difficulty hiring court assistants. A year ago, we weren't receiving any applications for those positions. And we were finally able to fill most of those positions after Judge Dickerson increased the salaries last year by $1,700, bringing it just over $14 an hour for those positions. We currently have one vacant position, and we haven't received very many applications over the last couple of months. So I think part of that is due to the salary and the state of the economy. We have also lost several employees to the county attorney's office. The responsibilities of our court assistants are equal to the legal secretaries in the county offices, but the legal secretary positions have higher salaries. We train and hire, we hire and train court assistants, and then the county offices can offer them more money, flex schedules, and sometimes the ability to work remotely. And they get employees that are already trained in the legal code. We're currently looking at offering some kind of flex schedules, but it's not possible for us to offer remote work or more money at this point. During COVID, I would note that our staff worked in person throughout the whole pandemic. So if we don't increase the salaries of our court positions, we won't be able to retain our good employees, and we'll continue to have turnover in these positions.
What's your turnover rate?
I don't know what it is. I can look into that and you can ask me. Right now, we're almost fully staffed, but we do have some positions we're struggling with. But they keep going to other positions.
Well, in the past, we had a really high turnover rate there. And so I was wondering if it's stabilized?
Yes, it has. The reason we're losing people is for higher salaries.
My name is Judge Trevor Ward. I'm just a piece in Wilcox. I also am the presiding justice of peace for the county and will be representing the other justice courts. To expand a little bit on duties that the clerks do in our courts that Judge Dickerson had mentioned, I've actually gone through and listed, you know, each individual person that works in the court, from our two front desk clerks to our warrant clerk, to our civil clerk, our criminal clerk, to our manager, the duties they do. I'm going to just name off a few to, I know Tim said someone, and I'm going to just add on to them. The walk-ins are a big thing for us. We get a lot of walk-ins in the courts. And oftentimes, as John said, they're the first face they see of the court system. Even felonies that come into our court, they started in the justice courts, and then we do initial appearances, and then they end up going into spirit court for resolution. Our clerks are taking payments. People come in for order infections. They handle forcible detainers. They do payment contracts. They issue warrants. They quash warrants. They take payments throughout the day by the phone, in mail, and in person. So each morning, they have to count a drawer. It has to be verified by another clerk. And at the end of the day, it has to be reconciled and counted by a separate clerk to meet the minimum accounting standards, which we are audited on every two years. They handle citations that come into the court. And this is just the front desk clerks. So what happens is when the Sheriff's Department in Wilcox PD or any other police department comes and they bring a stack of handwritten tickets, the clerks have to manually enter those tickets into the system. If the ticket is a criminal ticket, then the clerk has to generate the proper misdemeanor paperwork, and then that is generated and is given to the criminal clerk. They put it on a schedule, and then we have an arraignment, initial appearance on Wednesdays in our court and in other courts at the same time. They get letters from people that are in custody, and they're wanting credit for time served. They have to pull those files. They have to look and see if there's any mandatory fines. They kind of set it out for me to look at, and then I determine whether or not we can get credit for time served. If there's somebody like FBI or DEA- If there's somebody like FBI or DEA, they wanna background check on somebody, and they have something out of our court, they send it to us. Those clerks have to do that, and it's the front, the front clerks. We have our initial appearances and arraignment days and our pretrial days. Because we get the county attorney twice a month, we have a big calendar on those days. Sometimes we have sixty to seventy pretrials, so everybody pitches in. They're all cross-trained on how to do all the paperwork. Sometimes on those days, the phone service suffers because we're trying to get those cases processed, especially people that are in custody who wanna make sure they're getting the paperwork and they're getting out of custody in time. A lot of the challenges that we face are the same as any faces. You know, we pay our clerks fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents an hour. That's pretty much everybody in my office except for the chief clerk and any other courts also. The new Jack in the Box in Benson is starting their employees out at fifteen dollars an hour. Now, Sierra Vista, the turnover rate in Sierra Vista is probably a whole lot higher than what it is in Wilcox just because there's more opportunity in Sierra Vista. And I'm sure Tim can assess to that, because he's dealt with it for about sixteen years.
Usually it's about fifty percent.
During what period?
Well, pretty much the whole time I was there. I will not take all the blame or credit for it. But yeah, I think at least a third, and it's paid on the economy, of course. There were times when the force was hiring, that wasn't hiring, private law firms were hiring, they were not hiring. But at least a third on that. Sorry.
I had an employee who was gonna leave to go work at the marijuana plant. She was gonna make fifteen hundred dollars more a year. Fortunately, I was able to talk her out of that, and she's still with us. And this would solidify, you know, her if we were able to get the raises for these clerks that they deserve. They have a lot of responsibility, especially with the money, dealing with the money and, you know, median and minimum accounting standards. So I echo what everybody else has said. If we can't raise the pay, are people gonna start losing staff, more staff than we lose already? I do know that we have one justice court that's lost two clerks, one to the sheriff's department and one to the county attorney. So we are losing clerks the same way as.
So that's our presentation. If there are questions, or if there are any recommendations provided.
Would you have any questions?
No, ma'am, no questions. My heart goes out to you all. I totally get that. We thought we were bringing people up to market salary four years ago, and the market just kept on going. And we didn't make an effort at that time, but you acknowledge it's just gonna be this way across the board. And I guess I expected personally to kind of hear something of your comments today, and they were well taken by me.
But I think everybody realized we couldn't raise everybody at the same time, so it was a multi-year process. And I think people here need to understand that we don't look at your job description, and we don't set the standards. How do we get in this position of some of the probation officers being state-funded and some of them not being state-funded? And when you raise the salaries to one, you know, raise the salaries to the, and the state, you see what I'm saying? That it's always a mishmash with us, you know, because I think people have thought in the past that we say, okay, you can give a two percent raise or whatever. I think in the past, the way it's operated is we've allocated a certain amount of money, you know, whether it's to the sheriff's department or whether it's to a particular department. That official decides where that money goes. It's not us. And sometimes, we're happy with what they've done, and sometimes we look at it and go, geez, you know, I didn't think they'd do that. So I wanted all of you to understand that we don't go into departments and say, okay, you know, so much for probation, and so much for this, and so much for that. And that's why I said that he's the one who makes those decisions. We, of course, will have to make a decision of how much money will be available continually, because that's what salaries are. It's not a one-time thing. It's like every year, we gotta be able to support this. And that's how much we will hand to Judge Dickerson. And so the stories that you have to tell, I think, are valid. You know, I've always valued education for employees. And I think that, you know, having probation officers that have at least a bachelor's degree is a fine thing. I never understood why, as you kept relating to the sheriff's department, the deputy, you know, I mean, I can't tell them that they can only hire people with a college degree. I would appreciate that, because that means that they've at least been through a thought process. It's a little bit higher, and better thinking skills, and hopefully better decision-making skills. But we can't relate any of those. So I wanted you to understand that, you know, I think that your stories are accurate, that no matter what we do, we will only be handing an amount of money that we can carve out of our budget that we can sustain to the courts, and then it will be up to the courts. As all of you heard in the past, as long as I've been here, I really have never been a fan of saying everybody gets two percent, everybody gets three percent. But I think it never recognizes the people that are the stars, the people who go beyond and do more than just show up to work. Now, if you show up to work, you know, et cetera, then you deserve a minimum salary, but you don't deserve extra. If there's extra, it needs to be to those people who are working harder and smarter. And so I've always been a fan of the fact that you have to go through some kind of a process with each one of your employees. And so I don't think all of you are level, even though you're all probation officers. But I'm not gonna be setting your salaries. Someone else will be. But that's just my theory, and I have never voted that the county will, well, let's give everybody a three percent rate. We're not all sheep or cattle, you know, we're different. And so we should recognize people that are superior and make them want to be more superior and, or, you know, to go to the next level. If you don't do that, then you end up with, my favorite saying is water seats the lowest level. So if you have no high producers in there, then pretty soon you're all gonna be low producers, because nobody's gonna be reaching beyond, you know, everybody just says, well, we all get three percent, then why should I bust myself? That's my theory. I don't know how your probation or your chief feels about that.
Why don't we let Mr. Johnson now get summarized and maybe give a little response?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dickerson. I appreciate that. I was gonna say something like, what employees deserve is not an issue. I think that I can say that I speak for my colleagues. What you are deserving of is not an issue. And it would be nice to be able to give everybody up to the, whatever the market is, keep up with the other entities. So what we, I think, Madam English, you talked about, well, how much money are we gonna have? And that is gonna depend on a lot, a lot on Mr. Line Decker, who I'm not gonna speak for, although I do trust him. So there's two ways, I believe, that property tax will increase due to valuation increases. I'm pretty sure that, I'd have to go through another binder to see what Mr. Line Decker said already, because we did it here for him. So there's two ways that we know that valuation can go higher and thus provide higher funds for the county. One way is devaluation of currency. Mr. Dickerson talked about what he referred to as macroeconomics, noting somewhere around eight percent inflation rate so far, and the figure I have for wholesale is eleven percent for wholesale. And then the other way that we want or certainly prefer is so-called demand pull increase in property values, which is a true increase of the property value based on higher demand for everybody's property in Arizona, because everybody wants to live here for the same reasons we all do. So that is gonna be something for Mr. Line Decker to have to figure out. What is the difference between what the kind of inflation that's okay, which is the supply and demand kind versus the inflation that we don't want, which is devaluation of the currency? So that is going to be part of the mix. And that is, I hope that I have more opportunity to talk to my colleagues about the truth in taxation hearings that either will or will not come before us for all the departments and entities that we have to deal with. Another thing that I am always in favor of is signing and retention bonuses. Signing and retention bonuses. I talked to Mr. Carwache about that from time to time. And he talked about the difficulty in being able to enforce it. In other words, somebody signs up for such and such a signing and retention bonus, and then I'll change my mind, I believe, but anyway. Well, what do you do about that? I'm not sure. But nonetheless, I do like that option, or at least the idea of that option. And I also do like the idea of a Spanish language proficiency bonus, because we're, what, two miles from the border, or something like that? So that's all I have for comments at this time. I have a chair. Thank you.
Can I hear any?
I'll just summarize, so you can respond to something. We've talked about the different parts of the judicial system. This is a unified process. We are a judicial family. We got all of it together. We're trying to establish a couple things. One, a logical way to determine market banks. That's what we're advocating in Mahawis. Because whether to be fully funded or not, you don't know how you're treating the employees pay-wise if you don't have some idea of a fair market bank. And I'll note, we're not saying give everybody the midpoint that market bank goes to. Chairman's comments about some people are more valued employees than others. But my theory is, if the employee is worth keeping, there's best probation, employee probation, and you're keeping them, you're naturally making at least the bottom threshold of the market. And then once you get, like, across-the-board people there, then you can start thinking about, well, this person is more valuable than this other person, and try to differentiate that way. If we're always trying to catch up across the board, then we can't focus on what our postpaid pay. And then finally, I'd really ask the board to take a close look at the county wage survey. And this is really separate from Mojave County, separate from anything. Are these court assistants, is their work really comparable to the people just above them, just below them? How would you compare probation officers and the deputy sheriff? It just appears that the county employees have fallen behind comparing other positions. That's our experience as far as losing people, and when I saw this, I thought, well, that explains it. And I think John had mentioned this, about what percent of the lowest county employees are, remember that?
Sixty lowest, fifty percent at the court.
And those are people who are handling money, delivering to the public. So appreciate your time, and we understand, I understand the constraints on the board, and so we always strive to do that. You understand, and I have to work.
I have to jump in and say so that your employees understand that, you know, we've had a fantastic working relationship with the courts. We've tried never to be adversarial with them. They have tried not to be adversarial with us or demanding of us. And so we have always tried to be fair and give what we could. I would give anything if this were not one of those counties that had lost population. And we've even lost the ability to spend what money we have. And you see, so we're in kind of a different situation than Mojave County that's growing, or even Navajo County that's growing, or you see what I'm saying? We're sitting here going, we're losing people, and that means we lose the ability to spend even the money that we can bring in. And of course, salaries are part of that spending that we have to declare. So I'm not trying to form out this. What I'm saying to you is that when we look at the budget, people are the first thing. You haven't probably noticed that this last year, because we've had a tremendous amount of federal dollars coming in that needed to be spent not on employees, but on one-time things, like buildings, you know, because it's not continuous money. It's not money that you're gonna be spending every year. And so it has allowed us to put some roofs on and do some things. But it never was money we could have spent for salaries in the first place. And so I wanted you all to understand that when you see that we're spending all these dollars, they never could have been spent where our first thought is, and usually where our heart is, is what can we do for the employees this year? It's unfortunate, I think, that the courts have their own system, and we have ours, so that these things aren't melded in the sense of a clerk is a clerk. You see what I'm saying? Is so, so there are certainly reasons why you're separate, but benefits to being together. And so that's why we've tried hard to see what can we do about, you know, I mean, we all have the same health system, don't we? And it seems to work, you know, the court system helps employees get the same health that somebody in the highway department gets. And so there are things that we can do, and it's not money-saving, and I, maybe we save some money. I say maybe, you know, that wasn't my goal or my thought when we talked about the juvenile probation. It was what's best for those two. What's the best situation? And education-wise, et cetera, et cetera. And so if we save some money, that's a bonus. And if we save some money, that means we can use it for something else. But I want everyone to understand that was not going along with that. It was not for the reason of, oh, we're gonna get rid of some employees and we're gonna save some money. It was because we thought it was a better situation for the children who come through this system in the first place. So, Rich, did you have any closing thoughts? You all understood, I'm sure, that we don't make decisions in what section we need. We're here to hear, and then we have to have time to balance what the requests are from all the departments, all the divisions, and see what we can do accordingly. And then we have to match that up with, as Dan will help us with our expenditure limit. You know, how much can we spend and still move forward? Because again, that's something I wanted you to understand, because it's not generally understood by the public, is that if you have money, can't you spend it? Because you'll see in our budget that there's a lot of carry-forward money. You go, what are they giving to us? Well, we have an expenditure limit, and it's based on a formula from many years ago. And it's based on population, and as ours goes down, spending limit goes down. How much did we lose this year, Dan? Seven hundred thousand?
Seven hundred. About three quarters of a million.
So do you see what I'm saying? It's kind of like, what you wanted in raises, we lost in expenditure limit, just like that, you know, when the census came out. But all of us, we hear you, and we see the information, and thanks for the presentation. Because it clearly shows your employees that you're working on their behalf, and they need to hear that. They need to know that the board got the information, and so they won't blame you if they don't get it. They'll just blame us. So that's okay. That's what we're here for. Have anything you wanna add?
I do. So this is the first year, I think, that we've gotten so much information from the court side regarding market data. So, and that was lacking, I think, in the past. So, and this is not just the end of the conversation. We started the conversation before. This is a continuation. So as we examine all the market data, you know, we'll come together so that everyone's on the same page going forward of what actually is market. And detail explanation of what that is and what the goal is. But as Chair English mentioned, we do have other things, right, to consider. It's not just, can I give you the money this year? Because if we can afford salary increases for one year, my goal is to see that it's continual, because it's year after year. On top of the things that were already mentioned, just the additional, it's two point three million dollars that the legislature is passing out to us to pay for more.
That we didn't pay for last year.
That we didn't pay for last year. So.
Part of that's probation salaries.
And it's.
Part of it's judges' salaries. You know, they pass these things, and then they say, you pay them. And we're gonna go, okay. We're going to go, okay.
But as I look across, I'm glad that everyone came because there's so many familiar faces that I haven't seen in a while. So I'm always happy about that and I know that there are hardworking people on the court side and I've seen it firsthand. So we're going to take all this, examine it and see what we can do. So I appreciate everyone coming by. I appreciate seeing the familiar faces. So thank you.
Well, we need to make sure Lord doesn't have one last comment, huh?
Oh, sure. Just to reiterate, signing and retention bonuses and what a truth in taxation hearing, what will there be a truth in taxation hearing on or not as we move forward into the summer? So we'll be talking about that later some more, I guess.
It's based on the limit. If we need to have one, we'll have one. We don't do that often. We don't have one often. You have any comments, last comment?
Nope.
Well, thank you all for coming and as I usually do, I need to tell the board when the next meeting is and it'll be Friday. Maybe the thirteen, at ten AM and it's a work session on development here on the Wilcox groundwater basin. And I don't want you leaving here thinking we make decisions on this. What our work session is, is how the process works. Okay? So don't go out here saying you're going to be talking about the groundwater basin. We're going to be talking about the process of getting it on the bow. Okay? So this work session is over and thank you all for coming.